Doing. I know there's not a silver bullet answer like I'm trying to say it's it's a lot of people trying to get compliance. It it's not an easy, uh, easy fix for what you've described on.
Yeah, I just find it really frustrating though because it's such a simple thing to ask. The restaurant staff was all masked up. You can see him in the kitchen mask up, the wait staffs all masked up. And after church last Sunday, the these people just kept, you know, not this past Sunday before. These people just kept flooding in there without mask on. And you can't miss the signs and it's just really frustrating as this thing keeps ramping up more and more and more. That they're going to jeopardize these people. And so I'm just really kind of frustrated with it. They didn't ask them to leave, you know, they just went ahead and seated them. But I could see where people would be kind of jerks about it if the restaurant did step up to him and say, hey, you need to go get a mask. I could see where some people might be jerks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you here, Don. Uh, I'm gonna call the committee of the whole meeting for Tiffin City Council. Uh, for November sixteenth to order. So, Don, if you want to keep on going.
No, I I'm good. I'm just kind of vending, you know, because I'm, you know, I'm trying to support our businesses. I'm trying to go on our restaurants and I just find it frustrating that the people coming in aren't helping and could eventually get a shutdown again because they won't just wear a mask. So that's my soapbox. I'm done.
All right. Anybody else have anything for me? Any motions this evening? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, I, uh, I believe that we at least need, um, ordinance twenty nineteen suspended, um, because we are running short on money appropriated for income tax refunds for individuals and businesses that, uh, are due refunds because they overpaid into their income taxes. Of course, it's verified by the income tax department, but we're running low on the, uh, money. And so that we can return folks', uh, income tax money, uh, timely manner to them, we really need this, uh, suspended and passed this evening. Uh, council would, uh, please consider that.
You said one nineteen?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Kathy, did you need either of the other two eighteen or one twenty? That was the only one I was certain of.
It it would probably help to have both eighteen and twenty, um, one eighteen and one twenty pass two just to get the budget started on all of these, um, reductions that we need to do. Because we're going to be having that ordinance that we normally have at the end of the year that has all the rest of the adjustments. So these are a couple that I did ahead of time to try to get things going.
Kathy, what about ordinance one twenty-one, the new one that was, um, prepared today?
Yes, and that one is an absolute must if we can. We have a deadline of November twentieth on that one. That if we do not pass it, then we have to give the CARES Act fund back to the county.
Do we have one twenty-one?
I don't have it in my pack.
I don't either.
It was an addition.
What's that?
It was an addition later on. I couldn't do it until later today, so it it came after and got the packets done.
And you and you need that suspended?
Yes.
Does that have an emergency?
I believe it does.
It's it's an appropriation which allow the charter allows for that to go into effect immediately, uh, upon the the mayor's approval. And to to give a little more detail, what that does is it amends the budget to, uh, allow an appropriation and recording of the remaining CARES Act fund in Fund two ninety-six. Um, and that needs to be done as, um, um, Kathy said by November twentieth. Otherwise, the funds would need to be returned to the county auditor. And the amount in total is two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we don't show anything on the books for that past the twentieth.
And that has an emergency, did you say?
Again, the the charter, um, provides that an appropriation of an, um, an amendment that appropriates money that goes into effect immediately upon the signing by the mayor. So you don't need a, a separate, um, emergency.
Got you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just a little confused here. We're talking about suspending twenty dash one nineteen, fifteen thousand dollars returning of income tax funds. Where are those dollars currently? Because if people overpaid, I would think that money is sitting in a fund accessible to them. So I guess I need some explanation on that.
Kathy?
Yeah, um, it is above what we appropriated because we had an extra refund that came through that is more than what's in the budget. So we need to add a little bit so that we can do this refund for this person in a timely manner.
Law Director?
Yeah, to give further explanation, Ken, money, you're right, money is there. But in order to expend the money, to spend it, um, to return it to the people, you as council have to pass legislation to appropriate that, to put it into an expense line item that then can be used to cut checks by the finance director. Just like when you pass a budget at the beginning of the year, um, that is allows money in the various line items to be spent. Um, it really in some ways has nothing to do with whether the money's sitting there or not. It authorizes the expenditure and that's what you're doing with this ordinance.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I was just going to, uh, essentially say what, uh, what Brent just said.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, so Brent, just, just to clarify, the the three tabled ordinances, will those be motioned then since we're discussing them, um, this evening? Should be removed off of the table?
The the answer is, um, ordinance twenty dash one oh five, that will be removed from the table because the, we've had the public hearing. The planning commission has written their response, their recommendation, it's in the packet. And that'll be read for tonight. So that can be removed from the table and read for second time this evening. The other two ordinances remain on the table, awaiting for the results of the joint public hearing and the planning commission's written recommendation following the public hearing. So you will move under motions, you'll move to remove twenty dash one zero five from the table.
Right.
And the other two will remain on the table because you have to wait for, um, planning commission's recommendation following the public hearing this evening. So that'll be at your next meeting. You will take those off the table.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. I was kind of in transition. My wife had, uh, parent teacher conferences and I didn't quite catch what would we like suspended this evening?
One eighteen, one nineteen, and one twenty.
One twenty-one also.
And one twenty-one, yeah, excuse me, yeah, and one twenty-one.
Um, Councilman Schuff or Councilwoman Boyle, did you guys sign one twenty-one? Did one of you?
Yeah, I did, Ben.
Thank you.
Hey, what else? Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, the only, uh, other item I have, David Zach is, uh, is texting me about, um, ordinance one twenty-one. And we had a lot of confusion last week because there's money obviously left, uh, as you see from that ordinance. There was a lot of confusion last week because if we don't have the money turned or spent by a certain date, we have to return it. And what we've heard all along is if we don't spend all the funds that we have, we're not eligible for future funds. Um, I'm kind of talking back and forth with, uh, David Zach, uh, because his interpretation was that if we gave it back to Seneca County, that we could then reapply for those funds and hopefully do a second round of business, of, uh, grants for small businesses right now. Um, the problem is, uh, I don't think we have a certain clear picture on if we can indeed get that money back from the county, um, or if we lose the opportunity. And I know he's been working diligently. He's been texting me even right now while we're sitting here trying to get the the answer to it. Unfortunately, we don't have it, uh, for certain. The answer is you very likely can get it back. And I think that's the struggle is we have to make a decision tonight because of the deadline on whether or not we're going to take that risk and give it back to the county in hopes we can do a second round of funding with what was left over that what businesses did not apply for on that grant program. Or the other option is we go forward with ordinance one twenty-one tonight, return the funds to us and use it, uh, to assist with first responder, um, needs uh, and salaries and other items that are related to the pandemic. So, um, it it's a very tough decision right now. If that made any sense how I just explained it because we wanted to originally use all of that money for the grant program. We did not have enough businesses apply upfront to use all of the money for the grant program. So we had hoped that we'd be able to do a second round. Uh, the problem is the deadline is so soon. Uh, the only way we could do a second round would be to return the money to the county in hopes we can get it back again so that we can do another round. The only other option is we tonight go forward with ordinance one twenty-one and return that money to our general fund to help offset expenses in police, fire, and EMS, uh, as they relate to coronavirus. So it's a tough decision. Um, I'm talking to David here and and I don't know. I don't know if he's available to get on and explain any further during the meeting, but the sad part is we have to make a decision tonight. And we just have not been able to get all of the answers that we had answered from folks at the state and also at the county in the very short period of time that we had and were kind of left with a have to make decision tonight with only about eighty to ninety percent of the facts available to us. The safest option, of course, is to return that money to us and use it to offset fire EMS and and police expenses related to coronavirus. Um, or we can go with what we originally intended for the grant program, but that takes the risk of returning it to the county not being a hundred percent certain we get that money back. So I'll leave it at that.
Would the county be able to pass that money out to other businesses?
That's what we are trying to figure out. The problem is you've got federal money that was then given to the state, which was then run through their office of budget management, which was then given to the counties, which was then given to the cities. And to try to get an answer, every rung you go up the ladder, you get a different answer. And that's what I'm trying to figure out from David. Uh, now to see if he's got any steadfast answer. And it sounds like it's very likely we can get that money back if we return it to the county. The problem is he's been unable to give me a, a yes, a hundred percent sure you will have the money available to you, which then scares me that if that's the case, we may never get any of it again also. So it's the problem when you're working with bureaucracy and state and federal government trying to get any kind of answers when they've got, uh, that many employees running around and everybody sends you a different direction. It hasn't been easy.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno?
If we, we can't use the money, I remember the conversation originally was that we had hoped to give these businesses ten thousand and then we were afraid it wasn't enough funds to do that. What would happen if we can't use the money in other ways and and instead of taking a chance of losing it? What if we divide that money up and issue it to the people that did apply? Because we did originally talk about quite a bit more money than the money we gave them. Just a thought.
I would think that it would require action on council's part. Would it, would it not, Brent, in order to do that and change that program? This late or?
I don't think that we had the dollar amounts for individual grants in the legislation. I'd have to look at that, but Mayor, I don't think we did. Uh, the problem that I would see is that, um, the application process and and again, everybody's kind of making it up as they go, but, um, the program was designed to offer, um, applications for funds. It was laid out, made public with certain limitations. Now to go back and just say, we're going to give you additional money. Um, I'm not sure if that's can, how that would be audited, if you will, by, uh, the state, looking at what we've done. Um, maybe David has a better sense of that since he's been working with people there to to make sure that the program will will be, um, approved, uh, with any scrutiny. So I I don't know that we can just give them more money without any justification from them that they have those expenses. Um, so I I know it, it sounds like a good thing to do, but I, I'm not sure if that's if if the program right now is set up to do that. Maybe David have, would have a better, uh, response.
I don't believe it is, Brent. And with the fact the deadline is this Friday to return those mons to funds to Julie Atkins at the county auditor's office, I don't see how even if we wanted to, we could have that money, uh, doled out as required. Um, by that, that timeframe, you're talking, making communication with sixty-plus businesses and finding out does each one of those have enough additional expenses? I just don't think it's possible uh, to act that quickly in a matter of four days. Um, and then also to have time to to figure out the exact total and get the money back to Julie if some remains. And then we do run the risk of missing out on it. So, um, it really surprised me, Council President, that we did not have more individuals, uh, apply because I thought for sure we'd use this money up. I really wish we would have stuck to the original ten thousand dollars per business because we would have used it up most likely. Um, so I guess you live and learn, but that was a mistake.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, I'm going to, I'm going to call the, uh, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, meeting of Tiffen City Council to order. This evening, Councilwoman Boyle will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Boyle?
Thank you. Thank you. If you can all join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, and will be done in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. We give those trespassers against us, who lead us not temptation, but deliver us new book. For that is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, now and forever in them. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Anne Forrest, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman Leppard?
Here.
Councilman Perry?
Here.
Councilman Schiff?
Here.
Let's record show that we had six members of council here and one present. They're all present. I've been wanting to do that for a long time. Councilman Jones, you gave me, uh, the opening. All right, this time I'd like to, uh,
But.
Pardon me?
Make that two. I think Councilwoman Boyle was present also, wasn't she? Just then?
You're all here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Don't argue with the president. Um, I'd like to open a, a public hearing, um, for the purpose of discussing the application and ordinance twenty dash one fourteen, which would establish a designated outdoor refreshment area, commonly known as a DORA. Uh, anyone from the attending public, uh, who's listening to this and would like to comment, uh, as part of the, uh, public hearing, uh, Mayor, would you let them know how they can go about doing that and address their comments to, uh, to the president of the council, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, so members of the public, uh, if you would like to speak, um, you obviously first you must join Zoom. Uh, the, the link is on the city of Tiffin's website and also on the Facebook page. Um, but you must join Zoom to speak. Uh, when you get in here on Zoom, you'll just click the button that says raise hand. Uh, and then leave that hand up that shows up. We can see it and, uh, we will call on you. We'll try to in the order that, uh, the hands go up. If that's all right, Mr. President.
That's fine.
Okay, we do have, uh, our first hand up and that is, uh, Dave Spriggin. Um, so I am going to let him in now. And, uh, for members of the public who are joining us, uh, if you have called in, you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. Uh, if you're on the Zoom app or on the computer, uh, there's a button that is mute and unmute. So David, it appears that you are ready to go.
Thank you, sir. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, counsel, I appreciate everything you guys have done. Um, I know it's already old business for you, but the Tiffin CARES Act was amazing for us and so appreciated. Um, that being said, I want to throw my hat in the ring about the DORA. Uh, anything that can help our businesses right now is critical. Uh, I'll give you an example. The governor's given us twenty-five hundred dollars as a D, um, license holder, twenty-five hundred dollars, and it's appreciated, would cover maybe a Friday night for a bar. And we've been doing this since March. That being said, the DORA helped out tremendously. Even went so far as I had to move trash cans down to our property because they looked like Chia Pets. And that was a, it was a good thing because people were being responsible. They're throwing their cups away. I even worked out a thing with, uh, the city workers where they would leave me extra trash bags and I would empty the can so it didn't look unsightly. I didn't record any problems at all. I mainly heard everybody very happy about the DORA. I hope you haven't had any complaints. I hope you vote in favor of this. Um, it has really helped our business. To date, we've been through eight hundred cups. That's a big deal. That's a lot of people downtown. Um, and Saturday mornings have just been tremendous for us. So I guess, short of begging you, I hope that you vote in favor of the DORA.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, I am going to, uh, get Dave out. Uh, if there are any other members of the public who, uh, wish to address city council, I have another hand up, Mr. President. Eric Kibler, who is on his way in now.
Okay.
Eric, I think you're ready to go.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, thank you very much, uh, state members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, like Dave Spriggin, I would, uh, very much like to thank you for the Tiffin CARES Act and uh, like to thank you for the, um, trial run, if you will, of the DORA that we've had so far. It has been a great success for the Laird Arcade Brewery as well. Um, and I know that it, the struggle is real for all the bars and restaurants. And it's just something that, um, I believe projections are to go until September. I heard someone say that they've already been officially told they're not going back to work until September. They're working from home. So that we know that COVID is not going away anytime soon. Um, I think that, uh, prolonging or extending the DORA, making it a, a permanent, um, uh, feature of Tiffin would be vital in in the survival of a lot of restaurants and bars downtown. Um, I can say that, uh, our patrons appreciate the DORA. We have, uh, the ones that come from out of town are impressed with how well it runs and how well it has been running, um, as far as the the map and the the timeframe and everything. They, some of them have come from towns that have Doras that they said are so confusing and convoluted with with the, um, different timeframes that they, they barely partake in their own hometown DORA, but they enjoy coming here and partaking. Um, so I believe it's a good revenue booster, um, bringing in dollars from outside of town. Uh, I believe that we've not had any problems, um, that I'm aware of. Uh, unless anyone else has heard of anything, uh, it's a uh, been very respectfully practiced and, um, I just really hope that you guys continue and and consider making this a, a permanent feature of downtown. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, um, are there any other members of the public that wish to, uh, address city council? Okay, I've got, uh, a, I've got Nevin Martin that is coming in next.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, Nevin Martin, um, I'm on, uh, downtown development. Um, I'm not a bar owner. Um, I do partake in the DORA. Um, I've heard people was in the lab this past Friday. It's a group of people from Finley, Ohio, really impressed with it. They were actually sitting there. I wish we could get this, you know, I think they're kind of having some issues over there. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, the only complaint I've ever heard about it is the issues with the trash cans overflowing. But other than people getting rambunctious and getting out of control, I haven't heard anything like that. Um, the one thing that I, I want to know is why you wouldn't support this? I mean, when you've got downtown businesses that are just trying like crazy just to stay open and survive, this is the one opportunity for them to actually make it happen. This is, this is the light at the end of the tunnel for them because hopefully we get through this a lot sooner than what we're, what they're projecting. Um, I was in Chicago last week and there are restaurants that are literally, I mean, they're doing anything they can to stay open. They say outdoor dining only. They are literally renting tents and pumping heat in the, into them just to stay open to survive. This is an opportunity for Tiffin to really just stay ahead of the game and support all of our local businesses. And I, I just don't understand why you would not support this movement just to help out local businesses in downtown Tiffin. Thank you.
Thanks, Devon. You're muted.
Mayor, you're muted. Well, I heard what I said. Uh, Bryce Briggs is on his way in. Uh, Bryce, you should be able to talk.
Yep, can you guys hear me? Perfect. So I'm going to answer this from a different, a few different perspectives. So from the Chamber of Commerce perspective, obviously, we, you know, we interact with a lot of our members and our members are telling us if they're participants of the DORA, uh, obviously they're excited about it because it's continuing momentum for the city. Uh, if they are, you know, they're not bar owners, if they're, um, retail establishments, they're seeing benefits from it. Folks, you know, gathering downtown, they're enjoying, you know, the shops, uh, even from a tourism perspective, as we manage destination Seneca County, we're seeing folks that come outside the community. I've had a lot of communities, uh, told us, you know, how exciting is for Tiffin to have a DORA? And they don't, their community doesn't have one and they feel like they're missing out and their community is missing out from, from not having a DORA. So that's from the Chambers perspective and destination Seneca County. As a, um, as a downtown tenant myself, it's really cool to see, you know, Saturday morning, if I see, look across the street and see brunch at, you know, the Renaissance at Tiffin, see how these folks come out, um, and spend their afternoon and their day in downtown and it starts off at brunch. They go, they shop at the Washington Street Outfitters. And so from downtown, uh, you know, tenant perspective, looking at my windows and seeing people, you know, go down the streets, you know, enjoying a drink on a Saturday or during the week. It, for me, it's just, you know, by, you know, approving, uh, the, the DORA, it's just continuing in the, the growth and momentum we've had. Again, I don't think there's been any issues with it. Um, in terms of having it tied again, I would urge council to support, to continue to support the DORA, not only for, you know, the city of Tiffin, for these businesses that, you know, may benefit directly as such as a bar or a restaurant, but these retail establishments. And then, third, I think from a tourism perspective, you know, we're trying to find ways that we can make Tiffin on the cutting edge. If that's the E-Screen concert series, if that's a splash pad, I think DORA is just another element that helps us stay ahead of the curve and really make Tiffin and Seneca County a destination for all.
Thanks, Bryce.
Okay, um, Bryce is on his way out. Uh, next I have Brian Bilger.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you, council, for listening to me and thanks for, uh, giving it a trial run. Um, I think the last time I spoke at a meeting such as this, I said I kind of hoped, um, I was afraid it would be underutilized and I'm glad to hear that the trash cans are full because every time I go through town, I keep looking for people with cups and unfortunately the sidewalks aren't lined up yet. So I, I still think it's a little underutilized. Um, all the businesses I know are loving it. And I should mention just again, I'm from, uh, the Tiffin Tomorrow original member and downtown And I should mention just again, I'm from the Tiffin Tomorrow original member and downtown board member. I would love, well, I wouldn't love, but if there, if any of the council members had heard any negativity, I would like to hear it brought up because we certainly want to attend to that. But hopefully not, I've heard a lot of positives. I guess I'd just ask that you'd continue to support it. And I know one of the things that made me really happy is I'm always kind of competitive and I want Tiffin to always be better than our surrounding cities, not, not work with them. But I knew Fremont is on top of Finley. I know Finley's had trouble, but Fremont is trying to get theirs passed because of all the positives that they've seen from ours. So hopefully you'll give it a positive look and I appreciate everything. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Brian. You are on the way out. And I have next Amy Reinhardt.
Good evening, can you?
Yep, we hear you.
Perfect. I'm, I just want to, to reiterate a number of things that have actually been said already this evening. This is, is a difficult time for our businesses downtown and in a very uncertain time. And this has been a tool that is helping to keep the, the bars and restaurants afloat. So I think it's, it's really important that we continue to support them this way. When you have bars and restaurants that are coming to us with Friday and Saturday evenings saying, you know, this is a 25 to 50% increase in the sales that we would normally see, then that's a big boost. You know, we don't know where things are going to go from here. I know after the announcement, you know, the discussion the governor had last week and, and the potential for, you know, potentially shutting things down again. This is just one of those tools that we can utilize to make sure that when we come back in 2021, that we still have our bars and restaurants in our downtown. And additionally, we are seeing a benefit to our retail establishments. You know, when you have someone downtown because they, whether they had dinner and then they got a drink to go and then they, they were downtown already. So they stopped at one of the retail shops and started shopping. It is benefiting all of the businesses together because we are seeing an increase in the foot traffic due to this program. So I, I think it's, it's vitally important at this time that we continue to support this and continue to support our downtown businesses so they can continue to be here in the future. And, and I will say, and this is just a little plug, make sure to shop small this winter, please. The businesses are struggling a bit and we want to continue to see our small businesses in 2021. So please get down there and let's make it a good season for them as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. So Amy on her way out. Next, I have Sam Smith.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. Yeah, hi, I'm Sam Smith from the Empire Restaurant downtown. I'm waiting for Dave to mute his, so there's no echo. I'm sure everything I'd like to bring to the table has already been addressed once. The door has done nothing but do great things for us. We love having it as another revenue stream, especially as winter approaches us and we might be moving more and more toward carryout meals. It's exactly what we've needed to help boost our business through this year and probably what will be a difficult winter for most of us downtown. So thanks for your time and we hope that that's something we can continue to offer.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, Sam is on his way out. Is there anyone else who wishes to address? We've got another one, Rob Weaver. Rob Weaver is on his way in, Mr. President.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, longtime listener, first time caller in this sense, I guess. Just want to first reiterate some of the previous statements that the fact that we're having a Zoom meeting here is an indication that this pandemic is not over. And while we have a lot of good news regarding potential vaccines, the best case scenarios I see are looking at July, maybe August before maybe we have herd immunity. That's probably at the earliest. I'd really like to encourage a continued use of the door for one thing, to help all our local businesses survive in the downtown area until we can get to that post-COVID period. And which point, I'm really thinking, well, I'll have a nice downtown celebration and then start thinking about the impact of the Dora after that. Because if it carries our businesses through this period, we will be in a very good position moving forward compared to other communities in our area and in Ohio. We'll be just two steps ahead of everybody else with a door in place. So I'd really behoove you to, to keep it in place and, and keep it going. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, Rob is on his way out. Next, we have, they're going to have to identify themselves because their name comes up. I think it might have to do with Ferguson, it might say, but I don't want to misspeak. So whomever it is, your name's kind of.
Yeah, this is, this is Brian Ferguson.
Okay.
Tom Rogers Flowers downtown.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for what you're doing in downtown. I, I, I feel like the door hasn't been utilized enough. I, I'm for it, I'm not against it. I do have one concern and that would be where the boundary is going to the back of the property. Because it's all private property really back here pretty much, other than, than this alley. I feel like it invites unwanted people back alley. But as far as retail wise, I don't think we've seen the benefits from it yet. But like I'm saying, I think it needs to be more utilized. And I, I am all for keeping the door in downtown. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, we have Brian on his way out. Next, I have a name that you all probably will remember, David Zach.
Who?
Yeah. I think you're good.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. So I want to keep my comments uncharacteristically short and sweet. Want to thank Tiffin City Council for putting this in a place and taking a risk to try something that was going to help our businesses. And you did it in an educated way. You, you heard the information about other communities throughout the state that had not had any bad experiences themselves and had had seen a, you know, very pronounced positive impact to the businesses. So you took a risk a year ago, especially given the fact that we were, you know, kind of in the pandemic and several months went by and you decided to take the plunge and do it. And since then, we've gotten the additional personal direct experience of what it's like in this community. And we found that the residents and the visitors have been responsible and they haven't caused any trouble. And it's been an enhancement to the very significant downtown revitalization that you all have had a huge hand in making happen by what you do in terms of funding us, by what you do in terms of keeping the, the parks taken care of and the streets clean and, and, and repaved and all the wonderful things you do with the, the block grant funds and everything else. You added this to the arsenal and that direct personal experience of our businesses and our retailers and our bars and our restaurants has been positive. The citizens have been, it has been positive. And so I would ask that you, as you look to make another decision on this, that you look at the experience we had personally here in Tiffin. And based on that experience, do you think that the citizens and the residents deserve another, another chance? Is it, is it good enough? And are the businesses saying it's been helpful enough? And have there been not any problems that we, I would ask you to please consider doing this again for another year? Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, David.
Okay, David is on his way out. Is there anyone else who wishes to address City Council about Dora this evening? This is the last opportunity. You need to click the button that says raise hand. Well, Mr. President, there are no other hands going up. So I think, I think you're good.
Okay, good. Any member of council have any comments? Okay, okay, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm on the other end of the spectrum here. The trial run that we had here in 2020, turned out it worked much better than I expected. To my knowledge, been no problems, et cetera, and et cetera. I still have a hang up on it being in front of Calvert High School. Just don't think it sets a good example. Mr. Martin said, doesn't know why anyone in City Council would speak against the Dora. Well, and given one concern of mine is not being in front of Calvert High School. My understanding of Dora was to allow businesses to have outside dining, outside seating, et cetera. My understanding of that was leave it in the front of the businesses, leave it in the side of the businesses. It's not expanded into the school system, if you will. I was hoping three of my fellow council people would vote along with me next Monday, the 23rd, turn this down, that would still give us December, January, February and March to come up with another proposal which would not include Calvert High School. So those are my thoughts.
Councilwoman Yonatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, I wasn't that crazy about it last year and spoke against it. But of one good thing out of the virus, at least it gave us the opportunity to try it and it's been a huge success. I'm really proud of how well it's gone and how well people are handling it. And no, I, I'm not siding with you, Mr. Jones. I will be voting yes because these businesses need every possible help we can give them. They've handled it well and it's gone really well. And I'm just not going to stand in the way of trying to get them as much help as we can. So I will be a yes.
Okay, and I also want to add to Kim Radisson, who's the president of the school board and for the Catholic, Catholic schools. And Jeremy Marinus, who's the, Jeremy, is he, is this official title superintendent or is he a principal? Anyway, both of them have come out in support of the Dora. They don't have a problem with it as the boundary is now outlined in our request. So they're in favor of, Councilman Shuff.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm not sure what some of the issues are here as far as the Calvert thing goes with Councilman Jones. I mean, there's no restaurants or liquor establishments in front of Calvert. I think this is more for after hours or that sort of thing. So I don't think it's necessary like you have a bar in front of Calvert School. So I really don't see that as a huge issue. And then talking to some of their school board people and their higher ups in the education community, they don't have a problem with it and they're in support of it. Doesn't seem to be an issue with them.
Anyone else, Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to add that I appreciate council's willingness to consider this and the originality of giving this the trial run back in June when we passed everything. You know, I checked with Chief Stevens right before he left and up through Halloween, there still had been zero policing issues whatsoever with this. It's gone, I think, better than any of us could have expected. I've heard so many stories from downtown business owners similar to what Dave Spriggin shared with us this evening, about 800 cups. They've all been running out of cups and supplies because this was such a big hit this year. You know, I think it sends a terrible message. Really, I think it's, it sends the message that City Hall and, and local government doesn't care about you if we let this expire at the end of this year and say, well, we'll get back to you in two or three months or four months, whatever it may be, with a different plan. They, that different plan might not even work for them or what happens if we propose that again and it goes nowhere? They're going to be wondering what, what on earth is going on with the Dora and if their business is going to be able to survive. So I really hope that we pass this at the meeting a week from tonight. You know, with the entire leadership at Calvert on board with it, the fact that St. Joe's Church even has a beer tent every year during the festival where the kids are walking around. The kids are going to Buffalo Wild Wings. You see kids at a lot of our local sports bars with their parents, people drinking. It, it's not any different at the end of the day than the beer tent at St. Joe's or that those kids out at Buffalo Wild Wings seeing all these folks walking around, drinking beer, cheering on the game. In fact, I could make the excuse that it's much more rowdy at some of these sports bars with folks drinking, watching the big game than it is people just walking down the sidewalk. So I think it's a nonstarter to bring up those kind of scare tactics.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, okay, Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, sorry, just really quick, President Fod. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the, the folks who spoke from the public tonight and provided their testimonies and their experience with Dora this past, these past few months. It's great to hear. I know we've been discussing it as a council for quite some time. So I think we all kind of know where each other stand, but it's great to hear where, what everybody else has to say about it as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for joining and, and providing your feedback.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing, seeing no other hands raised, we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to move on to a joint public hearing between council and the planning commission. The purpose of the, the hearing is to discuss consideration of ordinance 20-110, which would zone approximately 9.79 acres of land owned by R&amp;L Zeiss Family Limited Partnerships, the Third LLC and others, and proposed reannexation from Hopewell Township as Zone R4, multi-family residential district. This is compatible with adjacent land use and meets the requirements of the Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances. Also, we'll be considering ordinance 20-112. This ordinance amends sections 1169.02 and 1171.02 of the Tiffin codified ordinance, adding Nano Distillery as a permitted use in the C2 general, commercial and C3 central business districts. Do we have all the members present from the planning commission?
Mr. President, I will go ahead and call the planning commission meeting also to order.
Thank you.
I believe if I counted correctly, we have a quorum. I've got one, two, three, four, five. Yes, we do have a quorum for the planning commission, so you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. We'll move ahead with the, with the hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council and the planning commission? Please identify yourself. The mayor will bring you in to our, to our hearing.
Yes, so any members of the public wishing to speak regarding the joint public hearing with the planning commission? You may raise your hand now. I do not see any hands, Mr. President.
Okay. Anyone from the planning commissioner council have a, have a comment? All right, thank you. Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing.
I think I've got them all out of here. Okay.
Okay.
I'll tell you, it's like playing Houdini, Mr. President, trying to do all these different roles at once.
We appreciate it. I'm glad it's you and not me. We would have a mess. All right, we'll move on in a, in the agenda. Everyone have an opportunity to read the minutes from the November 2nd, 2020 regular meeting of Tiffin City Council and the Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions, dilutions or corrections? Hearing done, the minutes will stand approved without objection. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gilligan.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to give a summary of my report from my meeting that took place on October 14th. So this meeting was held, a Long Community Planning meeting was held on October 14th, 2020.
So this meeting was held, a Long Community Planning meeting was held on October 14th, 2020 via Zoom. In attendance were council members Bridgette Boyle, Steve Leopard, Dan Perry, Don Yanatuno, and Ken Jones. Additionally, Mayor Motts, City Engineer Matt Watson, Superintendent of Public Works Brandon Burner, Law Director Brent Howard, City Administrator Dale Thornton, as well as TSEP representatives Nick Dutrow and Amy Reinhardt were also in attendance. This meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM, and the purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 20-43 to overhaul the Public Works Design Manual, the Zeiss Annexation Petition for Euclid Avenue, and the expansion of zoning classification C2C3 to include nano distilleries. The first topic discussed was the overhaul of the Public Works Design Manual, which was led by City Engineer Matt Watson. Matt explained the research his team performed to start the process of this redesign, such as reviewing codes from other cities. Additionally, the 1967 Design Manual was also applied as a basis during the overhaul process. With this information, the City Engineers Office created a draft manual, which was submitted to the city's Public Works Department, including Superintendent Brandon Burner and Kevin Hughes, Superintendent of the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Once their feedback was received, the City Engineers' office felt it was appropriate to move forward for adoption by City Council. In addition to updating the manual, Matt and his team analyzed the codified ordinances. Upon reviewing the codified ordinances, there were several sections that referenced the 1967 Public Works Design Manual. Therefore, code changes were required in these areas as well. There are certain sections in the city's code that have specific design regulations, such as the Planning Section, Chapter 11, as well as Section 9, Sanitary Sewer and Sidewalks. The intention is to have the codified ordinances reference the Public Works Design Manual. Therefore, as changes to design standard occur as we progress forward, the city will not have to make the changes in multiple layers. Further discussion followed, and Councilwoman Boyle made a motion for the Law Director to prepare legislation for the overhaul of the Public Works Design Manual and replace the existing Design Manual. Councilman Leopard seconded the motion, and the motion carried. The second topic of discussion was the Zeiss Annexation Petition for Euclid Avenue. The Law Director stated on October 7th, an annexation petition was filed with the county commissioners by Zeiss Companies, along with other adjoining properties on Euclid Avenue. This petition was filed in pursuant of the state law. At the regularly scheduled County Commissioner meeting held on Thursday, October 8th, it was approved and the petition, as well as the resolution, were sent to the city of Tiffin. By law, this has to sit for 60 days prior to being presented to City Council for approval. In the interim, typically, City Council will consider a zoning ordinance for this area to be annexed in order for the authority over zoning matters to be held by the city. As this is a lengthy process pursuit to the charter, it is recommended that a zoning ordinance shall be introduced by the city, or to the city, excuse me, on Monday, October 19th, to begin the zoning process. With no further questions or concerns, Councilwoman Boyle made a motion for the Law Director to prepare legislation introducing a zoning ordinance for this area with the zoning classification R4 multifamily. Councilwoman Perry seconded the motion, and the motion carried. The last topic of discussion was the expansion for zoning classification C2 and C3 to include nano distilleries. Nick Dutrow from TSEP provided an update on this topic by stating TSEP has been working with a company who is looking to bring a distillery to Tiffin. A portion of this property is in a commercial zoning area currently. Therefore, nano distilleries would be required to be added to C2 and C3 commercial districts in order for the business to operate in this area. By adding this in the code, it helps promote future businesses for Tiffin. Councilman Leopard made a motion for the Law Director to prepare legislation for the expansion of the C2 and C3 zoning districts to include nano distilleries. Councilman Perry seconded the motion, and the motion carried. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 5:14 PM. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boyle. Are there any questions for the councilwoman? Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
Report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilwoman Yantuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Shuff.
No report this time, Mr. President. We did have a meeting on October 22nd, but I would like to just double check here, ask with the administration, did we get anywhere as far as TPC goes and getting the cups moving forward or the design, do we make any headway on that, Mayor Motts?
I will go ahead and have Dale Thornton answer that, since he was the one that spoke with TPC and was working on it.
Yes, we were successful, Councilman Shuff, in arranging with TPC to provide cups, even at a more discounted price than we originally had thought. My thanks to the Chamber and Bryce Riggs for coming forward with the money then to pay for those cups. So everything is set to go.
Thank you. I'll get some details off you later and I'll have my report for the next meeting. Just I was waiting to get some final details. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone see a need for Committee of the Whole meeting? We'll move on to reports of the officers. His Honor Mayor, Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the only item that will probably have potentially Committee of the Whole is budget, but I'll discuss that here this evening during my report, and we can go from there with how you want to handle it. So first off this evening, I have a proclamation. And every year, as you know, with City Council, that we issue a mayor's award that we give to a person or an organization for going above and beyond and really, you know, doing something magnificent. We've had folks such as Tim Meeker for his volunteerism along Frost Parkway recognized. Last year, we had the Wisers and the folks that take care of all of the different watering of all of our planners downtown. They're down there almost every night of the week watering. I know Councilman Jones and his wife participate with that group now. So every year, we like to honor different either individuals or groups of individuals for going above and beyond his residents, and this year is no exception. So I'm going to read this mayor's proclamation from the city of Tiffin, Ohio, and it states, "Whereas, Helping Hands in Seneca County is a Facebook group that serves as a place for people to connect with neighbors in need and organizations that are helping those in need. Members are encouraged to reach out for help or reach out to help. Everything offered through the group is free. And whereas, the group was inspired by Anne Lang Devine, was started by Jill Goshi on March 20th, and quickly grew to thousands of members at the end of September. The group had nearly 5,000 members. Whereas Andrea Toronaro of Tiffin had started making face masks, and the Helping Hands Facebook group became the perfect spot to coordinate seamstresses' efforts. Andrea and her family turned their porch into a general store of sorts, and people would stop by all day long to drop off donations towards the effort and to pick up what they needed and return completed masks. Andrea has done a tremendous job keeping the effort organized and efficient, and she ensures everyone gets the mask they need. And whereas, about 125 people offered their talents to assist in the mask-making effort, and they created about 45,000 masks. Well, from when we wrote this proclamation, my understanding is now that they have more than 50,000 masks that they've made. The effort involved many people in the community, over 125 of them, including those at Crossway and Lotus Recovery House. Whereas, Helping Hands supplied masks to local schools, including Tiffin City Schools, North Central Academy, Bridges Preparatory Academy, Old Ford, and Fremont, and local businesses throughout Tiffin and Seneca County. And whereas, it has been absolutely incredible to see strangers become friends and countless people helped through the Facebook group. And whereas, organizers believe lives have been saved through the efforts of the dedicated seamstresses who have been given so freely of their time to help people they did not know. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Demonts, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Monday, November 16th, as Helping Hands of Seneca County Mask-Making Group Day, and present to this group the annual mayor's award for the year 2020. This was done under my hand the 16th day of November in the year of our Lord 2020." So with that, usually, we like to have the group up at the City Council meeting and present everything to them. Unfortunately, we're not able to do so this year because of the pandemic and us meeting virtually. But I thought there was no better group than to extend it to these individuals for all of their efforts to have made over 50,000 masks now that they have not charged anything for, to help out our schoolchildren and our businesses, just a tremendous effort. We have done our best to try to include every name of the different seamstresses who participated. On the second page of the proclamation, we also listed businesses that assisted with it. I apologize in advance, because undoubtedly with our efforts to try to track down everyone, we probably have missed someone. Just really, I guess, I'm disappointed we weren't able to have them here this evening to recognize and thank for all of their hard work. I know we have Andrea and Rich Toronaro listening. Hope I don't shock them. I'm going to try to bring them in just in case they have any words to say. But I just wanted to do this as a thank you to the seamstresses who have probably worked until about their hands have been bloodied throughout this process to make masks for the schoolchildren and our businesses and our healthcare workers and everything else. So the plaque has been engraved, and it hangs in the hallway. Rich has the surprise plaque there this evening that we got to Rich. I want to thank Rich Toronaro and Jill Goshi, who are just tremendous at coordinating and trying to keep this all a secret with trying to keep it to us and different things. So I don't know Andrea or Rich, if you two would like to say anything this evening, but I just thank you to you all and the other 124 individuals who have helped with this process.
We're just very blessed to have such a wonderful community of volunteers and helpers to continue along with this project to help everybody in the whole Seneca County. Very surprised and shocked over all of this. Thank you.
Aaron, we pulled it off.
Yes, well, we thought for sure, Rich, that she would check a wrong email or pick up the phone at the wrong time when we didn't.
Yep, we pulled it off. She was surprised.
Yeah.
Very surprised.
I guess you can keep a secret from over 100 people at once. That's...
That's right.
Especially in a small town like Tiffin. Who would have ever thought that we'd be able to pull this off? But thank you, Andrea. I know that you've kind of been the face of this group for a long time, but just thank you to each and every one of them. I'm proud to have the plaque bear the name of the group this year, and it will hang at City Hall. Every year, we engrave a new piece of that plaque with the winners. So thank you to you and your entire group of volunteers for the countless hours. And where are you approximately now with masks? I know every so often you provide an update.
54,250, I believe.
Wow, so you literally have stitched a mask for essentially every single person that lives in Seneca County. That's incredible.
That is very true. Yes, yes. We're very honored to be able to have been able to help as many people as we can.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Your masks are wonderful. They're doing their part to help limit the spread, so we appreciate it. I'm not sure, council members, if you have any questions or comments this evening before I...
Yeah, I just want to say, Andrea, on behalf of the council, this pandemic has absolutely been devastating in a lot of ways, but you're an example of the blessings that have come out of this as well. And our community is grateful, not only for what you've done, but your presence in our community in so many different ways, you and Rich and all the other people that are involved with what you've done here. It's very unselfish. It just shows what quality people we have living in this community. And I just want to wish you God's blessings on everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very touched.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Good choice, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so got them on their way out. Okay, continuing on with my report for this evening. I guess, you know, while we're on the topic of good news and good things, congratulations to the Lady Senecas. How exciting was that? I know I tuned in from my home computer to try to catch the match or the two matches over the weekend. Really exciting to see the Lady Seneca's volleyball team now winning two state titles in the last three years. Just incredible. They have done such a tremendous job. So congratulations, the Lady Senecas, on winning now your second state title, bringing it back in 2018, and now with another return here in 2020. You know, they went on... I'm not a big knowledgeable person with volleyball, but they went on a couple of runs there. The one, I think, was like 12-3, and then they had like another 10 unanswered points at another time. It's just incredible to see the talent on this team and the passion that those girls had. So I just want to congratulate them one more time on their success and wish them the very best for the future. And then, not to be outdone, I would also like to congratulate the Tiffin-Colombian Tornados. The football team made it to the state semifinals for the first time in Tiffin history. While they didn't win, that team is so incredibly young with so many of the players returning. It's really exciting to already start to think about the 2021 season. I was one of the many out there in Brunswick, Ohio, that bared the elements and cheered them on. They have absolutely nothing to be disappointed or ashamed about, because that team was phenomenal and never expected to even get to this point. And I just want to thank the coaches, the academics, and the students for everything that they had done this year with Tiffin-Colombian football. So huge congratulations to both Calvert and Colombian for a big sports week. It is nice in the midst of all of this pandemic and not having a whole lot of things to look forward to, to at least have that going on in this community. They really provided some inspiration and good feelings and good times here when I think all of us really needed some kind of a feel-good story. So congratulations, Colombian and Calvert. I also want to extend my congratulations to Charles Giles, who was named the Veteran of the Year for 2020 in Seneca County. Again, because of crowd restrictions and the ongoing pandemic, unable to hand that award to him in person. However, we did complete a proclamation which we sent to the Veterans Council and hopefully has arrived to his hands by now. But congratulations, Charles, on being named the 2020 Veteran of the Year. I would also like to inform City Council that the 2021 budget is complete from our end on the administration side. So we are ready to go. So, Mr. President, I guess while I finish my report, you can kind of think about how you would like to handle that. My recommendation would be that we... There, it's closed it. My recommendation would be that we need to meet sometime between the end of this week and sometime during the week of November 30th. Because of how weeks fall, we actually have an extra week in between this council meeting and our next council meeting. Our next council meeting after this actually does not fall until December the 7th, 2020, meaning we do have an extra week. But sometime either at the end of this week, sometime next week, which is the week of the 23rd, or sometime in the week of the 30th, we need to have one to two evenings carved out so that we can go through the budget with City Council. I guess a lot of it, council, will have to give us feedback on if you think you want one or two sessions and just how in-depth you want. We will have the budget sent out to you, to your emails here very soon. So you can look that over. Really, what I would encourage you all to do is to look at the budget ahead of time before that hearing. Write down any questions, make highlights on items that you may have, because we do not plan to walk through line by line and go through every single item in there. So I would encourage council members to bring their questions. As always, myself, City Administrator Thornton, Kathy Kaufman, we're all willing to answer any questions also ahead of time if we can save time that evening. So going forward, we do need to get the budget resolved so that we can go forward. A couple of other items around...
Can I stop you for a second there, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So you said we needed something done no later than November 30th?
Well, no later than that week. Essentially, what we have to do, Council President, is have the budget so that we can have the first reading on Monday, December the 7th. Because by doing that, it will require us to only have to hold one special meeting of council. If we do not have things ready to go on the 7th, we're going to have to haul everybody in for a meeting, two special meetings in December, which I know with folks with vacations and holidays, it can be very difficult. So we're trying to get it so that we only have to bring you all in for one special meeting and not two.
How does everyone feel about Monday, November 30th? That's right after Thanksgiving. Does that work? I see everybody, anybody that doesn't work for, how would, what time do you want to start?
Well, I guess if, Mr. President, as long as everyone does their homework and looks at the items ahead of time, and and we do not have to go through every single line on the sheet of paper together, I would think we could get things done in two hours or less. But if if folks don't look through the budget ahead of time and we do have to go line by line, you're probably looking at two different evenings like we've had to do a few times in the past. So
Yeah.
Ideally, everyone checks it out ahead of time and comes prepared with their questions.
Well, what I'm thinking about is six o'clock, or do you want to do it before then?
I'm good. I would prefer, six would be great if it works for everyone else. That makes time to at least eat or whatever in before the meeting.
Is that okay with you, Councilman Perry, six o'clock?
I get off right at six, so if we do like 6:30, that'd be ideal.
6:30? All right. So we'll set a meeting up for a committee, committee, the whole meeting?
Yeah.
For November 30th at 6:30? To discuss the budget and anything else that comes before the committee?
Perfect. Works for me.
Thank you.
Yep, I will get those notices out either this evening yet or tomorrow morning with the Zoom link for everyone. Hopefully you got the reminders. I've set up to where now, since in the past, I know people have accidentally deleted that single invite. Now you should start receiving a reminder. I think it's the day of and a week before these meetings so that hopefully we don't have anyone losing the link here anymore. So to continue on with the report for this evening, so we just talked about budget matters. I just want to give an update with where we are financially with the city. These numbers are through last Friday, which would have been November the 13th. Overall, things continue to trend up for us, but this, of course, is what also scares us with the rhetoric coming out of the governor's office in Columbus. We're growing increasingly concerned about another shutdown. I know thankfully, City Council passed a resolution earlier this year asking the governor to implement whatever measures necessary, but that we did not support another shutdown here in Tiffin. And I think we've made that abundantly clear. Unfortunately, we never did hear any kind of feedback from the governor's office in regard to that resolution that was sent down. But I want to reiterate that we cannot shut down again from a financial standpoint, from the future health and wellness of our community, from a mental health, a physical health, and just the overall survivability of our businesses. I know earlier this year, I had a conversation with both chiefs. They told me that this would have been sometime in August that the suicide rate and the attempted suicide rate were both up in the city. Drug overdoses have been, that are up. And just the overall amount of calls that they've received with with either mental health and distress sort of issues have all been up since the shutdown and essential to quasi-lockdown that we've been under right now. And we need to think about the impact of everything in regards to shutdowns and and not just thinking in tunnel vision about virus only, but we need to start thinking about the overall impact and what it does. So that's why we're continuing to encourage everyone to wear masks, wear them correctly if they're able to, and do their part to limit the spread, because we absolutely cannot have another shutdown again. If you look, if if this would have been a normal year, we were discussing things in department head meeting this morning, if this would have been a normal year for us, the city, we may have very well had the the highest level of income tax collections that we've ever seen in a single year with the city, which is our, of course, where our revenue comes from is income taxes. Unfortunately, that shutdown killed us. For three consecutive months, unemployment was up over 20% in the community. One of those months, it was over 30%, and that literally did us in with 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 revenue decline. So we started off the first quarter of the year with record revenues. We've been great since the the lockdown ended. In October, we finished up another 10% with revenue. But you look at a lot of these numbers from when the the shutdown occurred, and we have, you know, one month, we were down 30%. Another month, we were down 29%. Another month, 22%. And even in September, we are still down seven and a half. We're just now starting to get our feet under us. And my biggest fear is is that no one right now in Washington DC is working together. So if there is another shutdown in the state of Ohio, there is likely to be no kind of relief for all of these businesses that are put out of business, that you're going to have a lot of especially gig workers like hairdressers and bartenders and restaurant employees with no income that they're going to get, whereas at least before, we had stimulus money available for them. So I continue to urge the governor that we cannot have another mass shutdown here on businesses. And instead, we need to look at other member, other measures to try to control the spread. Because if we shut down again, I'll tell you, Washington Street down here is probably going to look like a bunch of empty, missing teeth. You're going to have every other business, based off information that's been released, that they're expecting 40 to 50% of small mom and pop businesses can close if we have another shutdown. You're basically walk down Washington Street and envision every other store closed. We can't afford it. And that doesn't even get into the fact of the the added mental health strain that it's placed on people, the other suicides that we've had, the attempted suicides, the drug overdoses. It's a very bleak picture that we're painting, but it's the God-honest truth. And we need to do what we can to avoid another shutdown. Absolutely have to. We're not going to get into too big of specifics right now, but I'm aware of currently at the city, over 10 employees that we have right now on quarantine at home. And the majority of those are positive cases. I'm not going to get into specifics of departments. Contract take, contact tracing has been performed, so anyone that was in contact with them all have been notified. But we've got to get this under control because we cannot shut down again. And I know, Mr. President, that that may be a good time. I know you wanted to talk a little further about it. Now may be the best time for you to jump in here with that before I continue on with the rest of my report.
Thanks, Mayor. Law Director, did you have an opportunity to look at any of the changes that were made in law with legislature?
Mr. President, I have not. I know that the state legislature did take a look at the issues and wanted a more collaborative approach to any further shutdowns of the economy. And they didn't want it to be just unilaterally taken by the governor's office. But so I think that they have a role to play, the state legislature. But I I don't know the specifics of what changes they made.
Okay. Well, it's definitely something we need to, we need to find out. I think that we need, you know, we sent, we sent the resolution to the to the governor's office. We also sent copies to our state representatives. We heard nothing back from many of them, which was disappointing. The old saying about the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. We've already tried shutting down. That didn't, that didn't work. It didn't eliminate the virus. It didn't, didn't seem to slow things down. It did devastate the economy and hurt us in a lot of different ways. There's absolutely no way on God's green earth that we can afford to have another shutdown. We can't do it. There, like we outlined in our resolution and the mayor's pointed out, we have social distancing, we wear masks, those are things that we can control. We can't control what happens to the economy if you shut it down. Quite frankly, I'm not sure. I hate to say that we're powerless to stop the state from shutting us down, but there's got to be something that collectively we can do to, excuse me, bring pressure to bear that doesn't allow this to happen. So I'm open to suggestions. I think that we need to contact our state representatives. We need to find out a little bit more about about the law. I think we need to go dig a little deeper than just passing a resolution and sending it down, or we need to have some direct contact with with our elected officials at the state level for starters. Anyone else?
Well, I guess just what I would add to 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 that, Rich, is I feel like what we have to do is, and I know it sounds like me playing that Monday morning quarterback, but what I feel like all along and what we've lacked is there needs to be clear guidelines spelled out of what you need to do. And we can't start going after certain businesses, because if they can meet all of the guidelines, how can we justify shutting down certain kinds of businesses, certain kinds of activities if all of the guidelines can be met? I have made an effort to go out and visit a lot of our businesses recently to see how this is running. And I can tell you, almost all of them that I have been in have been phenomenal at following the rules. And I'm not mentioning certain ones to try to get them, you know, their name out there or anything, but I have been at the Renaissance recently, Clover Club recently, Jolly's. I was at the Tiffin Brewery over the weekend. I've been at the Lab. Every one of those businesses I have been in is going above and beyond. Some of them have have dividers between every single seat. The employees are wearing their masks. They're making sure that the the people entering have masks on. They've got hand sanitizer galore everywhere. So we've got to stop singling out certain kinds of businesses and instead putting out what the guidelines are. And if you meet those guidelines, then you can remain open. If you can't meet them, then that's another story. But my problem is, you've got all these businesses here in Tiffin that I just mentioned, and there are more that I've been to. Those are just a few that are meeting every single one of those rules, but yet they're being threatened that maybe Thursday, the governor may come shut you down. So to me, it's a devil standard. Go after those that aren't following the basics. If you walk in and there's not a single employee or or patron with a mask on, that's a big deal. But to go after our businesses and just do a blanket shutdown on certain types of businesses, to me, is just absolutely wrong. And it's the wrong approach to this and does nothing good for anyone other than putting them all out of business and absolutely destroying our economy. So go after the the significant ones that are just not blatantly following anything. But we've got to quit abusing our businesses here in Tiffin and across the state of Ohio who are following these rules to a T and still being threatened to shut down.
Councilman Giannatuno?
Well, thank you. It it goes back to what I was saying earlier tonight before the meeting started. I think our businesses are doing a great job. They're really stepping up. They're trying to do what they need to do. And I just find it really frustrating and it really makes me very angry that people around here can't be decent enough to just follow the simple rule of a mask or social distance. These people are going to knock the heck out of these businesses if they don't step up and just do those simple things. And I, that's what I'm finding so very frustrating. It's going to hurt these businesses through no fault of their own. And so I agree with everything being said, but somehow we've got to get these citizens that don't agree with it to suck it up and just put the darn thing on.
Anyone else? Well.
Okay, I will continue on with my report then, Mr. President.
I just want to add one comment. I would like to I would like to challenge all of you to I think we need to, we need to contact our representatives and and let them know that we just can't shut things down. We just can't allow that to happen. So I'm encouraging all of you to do that at a minimum. Councilman Shup?
Yeah, I'm kind of with you, President Fote. I find it very frustrating that when these people want voted in or they need the votes to get into office, they're here to talk to the public and hear us out, but when we need to get a hold of and relay the problems that we're having and we don't get a response back, that's extremely agitating. I I think we need to know where they stand on these things instead of just dodging our emails and our requests. I'd like to hear some solid yeses and nos and where they stand.
I was at the hospital today for a checkup, you know, talking with my doctor. We've learned an awful lot about this coronavirus and however many months it's it's been it's been in our country. They've got patients out of Mercy in their 90s that that are recovering from this. You look at, yeah, the numbers are up on the number of people that are getting the, they're getting the virus, but on the other end, the number of people that are dying from it, that's going down. So, you know, we don't hear, we don't hear those things. All we, all we hear is you know, the the numbers are going up and we have to shut down. And I just think there's more to this discussion than than we're we're involved in and we're hearing. So again, I just, I'm I'm adamant about this. I just, I'm I'm willing to to march on Columbus to tell the governor that he just can't do this. You know, let's, let's like the mayor said, come up with some rules, some guidelines that you want to, you want to use to 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 help these businesses stay open. But we just can't afford to have our businesses shut down. It doesn't make any sense to me. I don't understand it. It's not a strategy. It's suicide. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay. Any other comments on that topic before I move on? I did see a couple of hands from the president go up, or from the public go up, Mr. President. But so just so folks on the public understand, if you haven't watched a meeting before, we do have a period coming up in a few moments after my report and a couple of other reports where the public does get the opportunity to raise their hand again and speak on any of these topics. So if you hang around for probably five to 10 minutes, that opportunity will be out there for you guys with your hands up. It's under our public comments section and it'll probably be coming in five to 10 minutes. So you can either put your hand up now and I can call on you in a bit, or you can wait until Council President Fote brings that up. A couple of other items quickly, Mr. President. Where's, where am I at on my report? Sorry. Got off topic here. Okay. Just want to thank the team at TSEP and also the team at Jobs Ohio and the state for all of the hard work in in sealing the deal to bring TH Plastics here to Tiffin, Ohio. I know you all know Lenny Claus. He played a huge role in that as well. We're excited because they're already in works to double the size of that spec building. It's going to bring a significant amount of jobs here to the community, good paying jobs. So we're, we're just thrilled to get TH Plastics here in Tiffin and see that up and running early into next year. Just a big, big win for the entire Tiffin community. You know, and and any kind of wins like this is just great right now with what's going on with with the pandemic. I want to congratulate Dr. Chris Sears on his groundbreaking ceremony. I don't know who ordered the weather, but it was almost 70 degrees for that groundbreaking a couple of weeks back. Absolutely beautiful. His office is just going to be a really nice addition to that whole Fairlane Progress Parkway area. It's business number two, helping pay that Tiff off that we have and continuing to develop that site that we view as the next commercial slash healthcare business park here in the community. I want to congratulate Jam's Monthly Markets on coming to Tiffin. They will be located on the building at 147 Madison Street across from Calvert. Their first holiday show is planned for December 5th and 6th. That will be a Christmas-related show, and then their first official market will kick off on January 21st through the 24th of next year. Mr. President, congratulations to Marcia Fote. I think you know her and her team at Slate Real Estate on on preparing to move into the old Surf and Turf Building downtown. Boy, it really looks nice. All the work that they've been doing. I think I've driven by and seen you several times working on it yourself. So what a nice remodel. It's great to see that business at a heavy traffic intersection put back into use here in Tiffin. And then just a couple of other reminders coming up. This coming Friday is the last day for leaf bag pickup in the city, so Friday, November 20th. I think the wind took care of a lot of leaves. I don't think there's any leaves left on many trees anymore, but please try to get those leaf bags to the curb by this coming Friday, because that is the last regular pickup day for those bags. Remind everyone, City Hall is closed on Thursday, the 26th, Friday, the 27th of November for Thanksgiving holiday. And then as of now, the the tree lighting ceremony is a go. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be scheduled for Friday, December the 4th at 5:15 PM in front of the Justice Center. So the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, Friday, December 4th, 5:15 PM. And then last but not least, the Christmas parade is on for this year, but it is being done in a different kind of way. But it is being done in a different kind of way. So the Christmas parade is scheduled for Friday, December 5th. From 11 AM till 1 PM. So you may wonder why is a parade scheduled with a start and end time? Well, uh, I want to give kudos to, uh, the volunteers for planning this one out. Uh, what they are doing is the parade will be held at the Seneca County Fairgrounds. And the parade itself will be stationary. But the public will drive through the parade as all of the people in their respective vehicles are standing there, wave and play Christmas music, whatever. So that way the, the crowd is actually in their family vehicles going by. Uh, and there's not the shoulder to shoulder gathering like we have downtown for the Christmas parade. Uh, so I want to thank the volunteers for this out of the box thought, but 11 AM to 1 PM Seneca County Fairgrounds on Saturday, December the 5th. Is our Christmas holiday parade this year. So while it's not a hundred percent normal, at least hopefully the kids can look forward to seeing Santa on the back of the fire truck and other things. As they will get to drive through and actually the, the public will be the parade and the, the parade will be the spectators this year. Uh, for a couple of hours out at the fairgrounds. So, um, I think that's really cool and I thank them for, uh, not just going with the easy cancel button and coming up with a creative way to make it happen. So, uh, thank you to the organizers for, for all of that. So with that, that concludes my report, Mr. President, but happy to answer the questions if there are any.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next, Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard.
Just thank you. Uh, just one item. The Charter Review Commission is meeting next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. On, uh, the 24th at 6 PM via Zoom, a Zoom meeting. The agenda is to consider and review articles four, five, and potentially six of the charter. Article four is legislative procedure. Article five deals with the mayor. And article six is titled administrative departments. So those will be the, the subjects for review and discussion. Anyone wishing to attend may attend via Zoom. I believe that there may be a, um, uh, Zoom instructions in the newspaper prior to the, the meeting. Uh, the public can also obtain the Zoom instructions from the mayor's office if they, um, wish to attend. And any, uh, council members are obviously very welcome to attend.
Thank you. Can you send us that, uh, link, Mayor?
Yes, uh, I thought I did already, but I may not have. Um, so if I did not, I apologize, but I will make sure that you all, uh, get that link.
And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thanks, Law Director. Uh, any questions for the Law Director? All right, we're now under written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Mayor's request for legislation number 20 dash 44, Sean Avenue Improvements Project.
Our request for legislation 20 dash 44 will be, um, turned over to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee.
And Mayor's request for legislation number 20 dash 45 regarding East Street Perry, uh, East Perry Street Reconstruction Project.
Request for legislation number 24 dash 45 will be turned over to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 20 dash 46 revisions to the zoning code.
Request for, uh, Mayor's request for legislation 20 dash 46 will be turned over to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 20 dash 47, Tiffin Zoning Code Change.
Mayor's request for legislation 20 dash 47 will be turned over to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
And I have Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F20 dash 51. To amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 in order to reduce expenses in the Miami Street project. In order to balance the budget and to approve a transfer to return the unused funds from the object to the general fund.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F20 dash 51 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Ordinance 20 dash 118 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 20 dash 52 to amend 2020 Budget Ordinance 19 dash 84. In order to allow additional funds to be appropriated and budget for income tax refund.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F20 dash 52 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Ordinance 20 dash 119 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F20 dash 53 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19 dash 84. In order to reduce expenses in the state highway. And safe routes to school funds in order to balance the budget and approve a transfer to return unused funds from the Sarah Street project to the general fund.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F20 dash 53 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Uh, ordinance 20 dash 120 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then we have a new addition that was not in the packet that came in this afternoon. It's Request for Legislation Number F20 dash 54. To amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19 dash 84. To allow for the recording of the remaining CARES Act coronavirus relief funds.
Finance Director's Request for. Legislation F20 dash 54 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Ordinance 20 dash 121 has been prepared for this evening's meeting.
Um, also we received the letter from the Planning Commission. It is November 10th regarding ordinance 20 as 105. Uh, requesting the creation of an R4A multiple family residential agricultural zoning district. And, uh, the planning commission voted unanimously unanimously to recommend that City Council approve this ordinance.
This letter will be, this letter will be held on file in the Clerk's Office.
Then I have Mayor's Letter of Appreciation to David Martin for his service on the Planning Commission and the zoning boards.
Um, this letter will be held on file in, uh, in the Clerk's Office. I would like to add too, if I could. Dave, Dave Martin is one of the unsung heroes in our community. He was born and raised here. Uh, he was a former police chief. He was a former mayor. Uh, under Dave's, uh, leadership, I really believe that this community started to, um. Do an about face and became very proactive in terms of, uh, deciding what our future was going to be. And, and the mayor had a lot to do with that. Mayor Martin had a lot to do with that and helped to lay the groundwork for where we're at today. And, um, I just want to, I hope he's listening this evening. If he's not, I hope enough people are. That, uh, he, um, he's a very humble man and, uh, he's a very smart guy. I had the opportunity to work with him for a couple of years. Um, as the, uh, city administrator and then as, uh, the president of Cidec and saw firsthand, uh, things that he was able to get accomplished. So I just want to congratulate Dave on all that he's done for our community and, uh, also his time on the, uh, on the planning commission. And, uh, he's always been one of those people who's been willing to help and do whatever he could, make Tiffin a better place. So thanks, Dave.
And we also have a letter, um, Mayor's Letter of Appreciation to Joseph Granata. For his service on the planning commission since 2013.
And if I could, I'd like to, I'd like to give Joe some kudos too. Another, another guy born and raised in, uh, in Tiffin, uh, had a great deep love for this community. Was a wonderful person. Uh, his word was always his bond. When Dave Martin was the mayor and, and, uh, was making a difference in this community. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Mott will tell you that you got to have cooperation from people on council and, uh, within, uh, within your team and city government. And, uh, Joe Granata was one of those team players in, uh, on city council. Who made a huge difference. He served this community for a long time as a member of, uh, of, of city council. And he too was one of the people that was a driver behind getting this community turned around. When we went through some, uh, really tough times back in the, uh, back in the seventies and early eighties. So I, I appreciate Joe for what he's done for the community and thank him. And again, I hope he's listening tonight. If he's not, then if we run into him, just, just give him a thanks and a pat on the back. And knowing Joe, that'd be more than enough payment for him. So, thank you, Joe. Thanks, Ann.
The next letter is, um, a Mayor's Letter of Appreciation to Herbert Renner. For his donation of $100 to the Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department for dog bags. And the last letter is an appreciation to the Eden Township Trustees, Attorney General David Ziegler for their approving the use of $5,000. Of their CARES funding to be transferred to the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. It's going to be used towards the purchase of firefighter PPE. That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We're now under, uh, oral communication. So hopefully those people that raise their hands under the mayor's. Uh, when the mayor was giving his reporter still around. So anyone from the attending public, uh, listening in this evening. The mayor will, will bring you up if, uh, you identify yourself. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. Do you have anybody out there that's listening?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We've got a couple of hands. Uh, first off, we have Gary Click, who I believe is Representative-elect Gary Click, but we'll find out very quickly here. All right, I think you're in, Gary.
Am I in? Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, Mayor Mott. I, I sure appreciate that. And, uh, I look forward to serving you for sure, uh, serving our community. Uh, just a couple matters of business. Just this week, we will be actually the caucus meeting, uh, be meeting on Wednesday. To, uh, elect new leadership for the next caucus or for the next session, the 134th session. And, uh, it looks like that's going to be Speaker Cup. I don't know that anyone is going to compete with him. And I think he's going to do a fine job. Uh, anyway, he's done a great job so far. And, uh, initially I was just going to listen in today, just watch, pay attention, just learn about your cares and your concerns. And I just heard some of the things you were talking about texting with, uh, Mayor Mott. He invited me to, to step in here. And just make a few comments. And first of all, I want you to know that I, I'm a hundred percent behind you, Mayor, uh, Mott and, uh, President Fote and the rest of you. We cannot afford a shutdown and, uh, I am going to work diligently, you know, when I take office. Uh, to prevent that from happening. And it's a little bit of time. It's actually, uh, January 1st is when I take office. Our first session will be January the 4th. Uh, we will have a swearing in locally. They'll be coming up soon. I'll let you know about that when that takes place. But I, I stand a hundred percent behind you. We cannot afford the shutdown. Uh, I was just talking with a, a doctor, friend of mine who's, uh, works in one of our local hospitals. And he was telling me that they're almost full and the biggest thing thrown up their rooms is attempted suicide and drug overdoses. Uh, and he says those are directly related to the things that are going on with COVID, threats for lockdown, things like that. Uh, there are many, just as, as the mayor alluded to, there are so many other side effects from these lockdowns. We just simply can't afford it. And, and along those lines, uh, I think even more important is just the idea. That we cannot have one person doing this unilaterally. We do need the House of Representatives. We do need the Senate to be engaged in this decision process. If it's a decision that has to be made, then it needs to be made by all the representatives and all the people who represent you. Somebody needs to be speaking up for Tiffin and for Fremont, small communities around here. And, and I just want you to know that I'm going to be that voice, uh, Councilman Schaff or Commissioner-elect Schaff. I heard your comments. And, and I want you to know that, uh, as your representative, I'm always going to be accessible to each and every one of you. If you got questions, concerns, send me an email, give me a phone call, send me a text. Uh, I, I truly want to be a servant leader that represents you, hears your voice and takes it to Columbus. So I don't want to drone on and on and on, but I do want you to know that I'm here for you, that I want to work with you and we're going to have a great partnership together. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Does anybody have any, um. Questions or comments for Representative-elect Click? Thank you. We look forward to working with you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, Gary is on his way out and, uh, now we have David Zach. Uh, and this part was my fault. David was supposed to go under my report to talk, to give an update on that CARES Act information we discussed in committee, the whole and. Everything else that we got talking about, uh, I neglected to call on him. So, um, should be on his way in.
Hi there, Mayor.
There he is.
And City Council. So glad to talk again. I had, uh, was working, uh, a lot of today on. The CARES programs, both Tiffin CARES and Seneca CARES and, um. Was even talking with Stacy Wilson as you all were having the meeting before the meeting and some of the questions were getting asked. Um, one of my teammates was passing along what those questions were. So I understand the question came up about, uh, could we just, uh, adjust the amounts? Of the Tiffin CARES program. Uh, and the answer for the Office of Budget Management, the state is no. You have to go with what your program guidelines are. So we can't just change the guidelines midstream to accommodate that as much as we would like to. Um, the second thing I would say is, you know, we, we benchmark six different CARES programs around the state. And based on the demand that they had and the amount of money that they were, were putting out, you know, we made our best recommendation based on the data that we had. Um, you know, if we would have known, I think in advance that, that we would have had 60 eligible and awarded applications. Uh, we would have recommended the $10,000, but we, that's, you know, 2020 hindsight. That being said, when we designed the Seneca CARES program, we did design it such that, uh, Tiffin companies were allowed to and encouraged to apply. And, uh, in the event that there was enough demand, um, it is possible for Stacy Wilson, the county administrator. For the city to, to direct those funds back to the county and the county has committed to put those right into the CARES program. If there's not, you know, and, and that would help Tiffin businesses. So let me give you just a quick sense of where we're at with our applications and demand right now. So, uh, you know, pretty exciting news. We have in the, uh, Seneca CARES program, we have 130 submitted applications. Uh, and, uh, and we're finishing up with 10, but how does that break out between the county and the city? So just county folks that were awarded original Tiffin CARES money, 44 eligible applications right now. Uh, that are ready to get awarded funding. Uh, and the way the Seneca CARES program is structured. Uh, you know, they get funded after the rural folks. So if the city doesn't put those funds in, those, those folks will, you know, is a good chance they won't get the funding. Uh, given the fact that there's 62 eligible county applications. Uh, so we're talking 44. That's roughly 176,000. Plus there's, uh, another 11 new applications of Tiffin businesses that didn't apply beforehand. So that's at least another 110,000. I mean, I'm estimating high because some of those could be less than, uh, and another potential new Tiffin business still in the works. See, you know, if I, if I tally the amount, you're talking 286, 296,000. The amount of outstanding money that has not been allocated is 241, 650. So if you discount some of those and say some of those. Uh, people coming back are going to be $2,000 winners, not $4,000 winners because they only applied, they can only be eligible for up to five. Then what that means is that the Tiffin money will be all put into different businesses as, as we would all, all like to have happened. Uh, through, you know, originally through the program. So we designed it in, in the justice case. So that given the very, very tight timelines of these programs and this money, uh, we can get that money to Tiffin businesses. We could not do another round. There's just not enough time, but we designed it. And I know when I had some early on discussions with the mayor, it's, you know. Would City Council and the administration be amenable if there's enough demand to potentially putting this to the county? If the county can commit to put this into the, the CARES program and support Tiffin businesses? At the time it was yes, of course, that's all contingent on what the administration and Tiffin City Council wants to do. You know, so, uh, so I'm sorry I wasn't on that portion of the, the earlier meeting and then I'm kind of coming on afterwards, but I was even working it. Uh, today and, and Stacy was on vacation last week, so we're just kind of catching up a little bit. Uh, so I appreciate your patience, but I mean, the exciting news is that the intention of City Council Administration to support the businesses at that level can be accomplished. Um, and that there's the demand there. Uh, it's a little bit, uh, going around a little bit to get it done. But it's being creative and a little innovative within the rules to get it done, but we're able to do it. So that's my report, Mayor. On the, the Tiffin CARES and the Seneca CARES programs.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. David, you said about 4,000 words in 45 seconds. Can you maybe give a, uh. Reader's Digest condensed version of, uh, what you just said, please?
Sure. Um, so we can't adjust the current Tiffin CARES program to give people more money. The state has ruled on that. We've asked. That's number one. Or, or we would do it because there's $241,000 left. 60 individual. 60 individual businesses winning money through the Tiffin CARES program were eligible. So that's the first thing. So the second thing is, is that the City of Tiffin can give that remaining $241,650 to the county. And the county has committed to put that into the Seneca CARES program. And Tiffin businesses have applied to that program. And so all of the money that the city would give back to the county for the county program would support Tiffin businesses. Number three, in the way that the Seneca CARES program is set up, if the city doesn't do that, those businesses likely won't get funding because the rural demand is really, really strong. Because of the, you know, the brand awareness and program awareness, I think that Tiffin did. I hope that's a little bit better, Councilman Gillig. I do get gusts up to 100 words a minute, so I apologize for that.
No, that was, that was very helpful. Would the money, I suppose, do the rural applicants have precedence with the Seneca CARES funding, would you say?
So the way we designed it was that if a villa, if a municipality or a township dedicated funds for the purpose that their recipients got first dibs. So in the case of if a Greensprings business applies, that Greenspring business gets precedence. If there's not enough demand for that, those funds, then it goes into the larger kitty.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, David?
No, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions for David? Thank you, David. Anyone else, Mayor?
No, I'm going to take David out. If there's anyone else from the public, I know we've got several still in the room. If there are anyone else that wishes to address City Council, this is your last opportunity of the evening. Just click the raise hand button. I am not seeing any other hands, Mr. President. So that appears to be it.
Thank you. We're now under motions. Does anyone have any motions? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to remove ordinance 20-105 from table legislation.
Thank you. We have a motion to remove ordinance 20-105 from the table. Is there a second? Councilman Schuff? Unmute yourself.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to remove ordinance 20-105 from the table. Is there any discussion? Clerk will call the vote, please, on the removal.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
The motion to remove ordinance 20-105 from the table passes with a vote of seven to zero. Any other motions? Okay, we're now under, we're now under resolutions. Any resolutions?
Mr. President, there are no resolutions.
Thank you. We are now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-105 introduced by Bridget Boyle, ordinance creating zoning classification R4A multiple family residential agricultural district, district for the purpose of permitting agricultural uses with restrictions along with multiple family residential uses.
This is second reading, ordinance 20-105.
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance number 20-109 introduced by Bridget Boyle, ordinance amending Chapter 9 Streets Utilities and Public Services Code and Chapter 1,127 subdivision design standards adopting a revised public works improvements design manual and updating references to the design manual and update related fees to make consistent with ordinance numbered 19-69.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-109. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for council's passage of ordinance 20-109.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-109. Is there a second? Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-109 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-111 introduced by Don Yanatuno, ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application, accept the deed and take all other actions necessary to acquire the real property located at 43 West Market Street, Tiffin, Ohio, from Seneca County Land Revitalization Corporation and convey said real property to the Seneca County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation, AKA Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-111. Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for immediate passage of ordinance 20-111.
Thank you. We have a motion for an immediate passage of ordinance 20-111. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Yes, it's just housekeeping. Property originally belonged to TCEP, and it's going back to TCEP. It's just a matter of cleaning that up.
Okay. Anyone else? The clerk will call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes. Ordinance 20-111 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-113 introduced by Steve Leopard, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement and right-of-way for public road and highway purposes along Tyber Road and Shawn Avenue.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-113. Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 20-113.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-113. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 20-113. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes. Ordinance 20-113 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-114 introduced by Tyler Schuff, ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA, for downtown Tiffin, acting regulations for the DORA and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-114.
Ordinance number 20-116 introduced by Tyler Schuff, ordinance amending sections 907.07D and E of Tiffin certified ordinances, decreasing the annual percentage increase in sewer rates to 4%.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-116.
Ordinance number 20-118 introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to reduce expenses in the Miami Street Project Fund by $397,507.65 in order to balance the budget and approve a transfer to return unused funds in the amount of $73,190.99 from the project to the general fund.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-118. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-118.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-118. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy, if I could trouble you here, I see we're returning $73,190.99 to the general fund, but we are reducing expenses of 397,507.65. Was that by any chance money that went back to Tiffin University for their role in the project?
Actually, no. What that money is, is when we do our budgets, we have to try to figure out how much the project is going to cost ahead of time. So we've put an amount in the budget, not really knowing how much it's going to cost. So this is just extra expense that is in the budget that we did not need, fortunately. So we need to just reduce that because it's not needed. And what actually is left in the fund is the $73,000 that we can put back in general fund because we did actually put general fund money into the project.
Councilman Gillig?
Though for suspension purposes, for those of you watching at home, this is just a housekeeping item, moving money back into our general fund.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes. Ordinance 20-118 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance 20-119 introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate $15,000 in the budget for income tax refunds.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-119. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for council's suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-119.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-119. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Finance Director Kaufman gave an excellent explanation during committee of the whole. This is required to be put into the budget so that we can account for a significant tax return that has just come into the city.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, you had your hand up? No? No? Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-119 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-120 introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to reduce expenses in the state highway fund by $208,458.54 and safe routes to school fund by $5,663.50 in order to balance the budget and approve a transfer to return unused funds in the amount of $3,175.15 from the Sarah Street project to the general fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-120. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-120.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-120. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'd second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Just another housekeeping item, returning unused portions to our general fund.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
This has an emergency, Mr. President.
It does? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Now vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes.
The emergency passed with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 20-120 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-121 introduced by Bridget Boyle, ordinance amending 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate and record in Fund 296, the remaining CARES Act funds of $241,650.46.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-121. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for council's, for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-121.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-121. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Motts?
Yes, Mr. President. So this is, this is, I guess, the big decision of the evening, is we need to make the, the, the final call on this unless council is willing to schedule a special meeting this week. This will be the decision whether or not we are going to return the funds to the county so that it can be used for a second round of the Small Business Relief Program, or if we are going to pull those funds back that remain there and apply them to first responder expenses due to coronavirus. So a vote yes for this resident, for this ordinance is to pull the funds back, not do a second round of grant program and using them for police and fire first responder expenses related to coronavirus. A vote no against this ordinance would mean a second round of grant funding as David Zach described this evening, but there's not a part of either option. It's got to be one of those two. So just to make sure if everyone understands how you're voting this evening and what basically that means.
Law Director?
Yes, in addition to what the mayor explained, and he's exactly right, I have a question for the finance director. And Kathy, the question is, if council chooses to have the money go back to the county, is the money currently appropriated in the correct line item to do so? Or would this ordinance need to be amended in the line items to allow for that expenditure back to the county?
I believe we would need to amend the ordinance, Law Director. And also, there's one more wrinkle to this, is that additional 46 cents that we got. Our books right now show 46 cents in the fund, which we cannot have after the 20th. So we would have to figure out what we're going to do as far as that goes. What happened was we were told how much we were going to receive, and it was no sense on the end. So that's what we put and it was, um, no sense on the end. So that's what we, uh, put forward in our ordinance and we had everything ready to go. Then when I actually saw the CARES Act funds hit our bank, there was forty-six cents extra that we did not know we were getting. So our balance right now is showing that on our books, which we can't show after the twentieth.
Law director.
Yeah, so, um, and is what Kathy then is saying that if council chooses to have this money go back to the county and I, you know, I don't want to make that decision, that's council's decision. But if that's what they decide, then we would need to have a motion to amend this ordinance. And Kathy, if you could help us, tell us what particular line item in the Two-Ninety-Six CARES Act, I think, fund, I assume it would be, uh, what particular line item it would be so we could amend the, this ordinance before passage. We may not need to go there, it just depends on what council wants to do.
Okay, is everyone as confused as I am right now?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I have a question. If the, it sounded like if the funds, we turned our funds over to the county, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that our city businesses would get it. It would open it up to the county. So it wouldn't necessarily go just strictly to our Tiffin businesses, correct?
Mayor.
Mr. President, um, I'm going to ask you if you would indulge me to allow David Zach to come back in here just so he can answer these questions instead of me trying to repeat what I heard him say. Is that okay?
Please.
For dragging out.
Please do.
David, I know you can hear us, so I'm going to bring you back in. Um, I believe that's accurate, Don, while he gets on here. Um, but I believe that as long as our businesses apply for all the money, they will be assured to get it. Um, David, can you hear us? Did you hear Don's question?
I did hear Don's question, so let me reiterate what I said before, maybe with a little more color commentary. So the way the program is set up and the way we've run it is that as municipalities and townships have submitted money into the program, we, that, you know, we have been allowed to, uh, you know, prioritize those particular businesses for, uh, those particular funds. And so our intention would be to have, you know, the, the county has committed that they would take the, this money and support different businesses with it in a similar fashion. So what I imagine, even though Stacy Wilson's in charge of the mechanics, what I would imagine would happen, uh, we are going to be receiving another one hundred and sixty-eight from, uh, the, the townships and the villages. There'll be an amendment to the contract. And I would imagine that with these funds, there will be another amendment to our contract in which this will be specified. But the county has committed to me, regardless of how the mechanics work out, that this money will be put towards different businesses. And there is enough demand uh, for that, for these funds from the different businesses that have applied to the Seneca CARES program. Yes, Don, I can see you. President.
The deadline was the, the ninth. And so if they didn't apply before the ninth, Tiffin businesses wouldn't be able to apply now then, correct?
Oh, that's, that's correct. But Tiffin businesses were notified and encouraged to apply to the Seneca CARES program. And so what I was indicating is that, you know, fifty-six Tiffin businesses, not including the, uh, the nonprofits, uh, had applied to the program. So if, if my counts are correct, uh, let me look at my real-time numbers. Uh, DDD, we have, looks like, you know, in addition to the five nonprofits, we have fifty-six different for-profit businesses that apply to the Seneca CARES program. And that's where I can say to the city council, there is more than enough demand from those Tiffin businesses that have applied to use up the two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents. If, if, so it's me, to Kathy's point.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I'm not sure how this, how this works, but I, I apologize. I misunderstood earlier. I, I, I don't know if I'm able to, but I would like to withdraw my motion, um, because I, I thought I was motioning to, for the, the funds to go back to the county. Um, especially hearing, uh, David say that, um, you know, we, they, we have plenty of businesses that would, um, have already applied and would receive the funding. Um, so, um, I apologize for the confusion. I don't know if I'm able to do so, but I would like to if that's possible.
Uh, Brett?
Well, if, if I understand right, um, Bridget, you're saying that you would want the, the funds to go to the county to be used then for, uh, the city businesses?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Okay, what I would, um, suggest is that the, if that's, uh, the, the pleasure of council, then that the mayor would entertain a motion to amend ordinance twenty dash one twenty-one. And in particular, the amendment would be to change the, um, line items, numbers and descriptions to what Kathy, who knows the budget better than I do, would suggest. Um, because that will then enable the ordinance to authorize appropriate money to authorize the expenditure to the county. And I'm talking slowly to allow Kathy time to, to look up those line items. Um, I think the dollar amounts would remain the same. Um, unless they are combined into one, um, one line item. I think Kathy may have the answer.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so I have a question. So how we would do this is that TSEP would still send the money back to us and then we would send it back to the county. Instead of them sending it back.
Does anybody know the, David, are you there?
I believe that's the way it has to go, Kathy.
That what we're thinking? Okay.
Yes.
So what?
We're gonna, after tonight, I, you know, I'm texting with Audrey, we, we will cut a check or get you the money back. We will start the process tomorrow morning. We were waiting to see how this was gonna go, um, and know what the mechanic. So yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, all right. So we would want to change the account number to two nine six one two four fifty-four hundred. And then it would be that whole amount, the two hundred forty-one, six fifty, forty-six, so that we can then expend that back to the county.
And, and Kathy, what is that line item, the fifty-four hundred? Uh, what's the description of that? Contractual services.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so also members, so what the ordinance that would change, as Kathy was saying, is that under the first line item, it would read two nine six point one two two four point fifty-four hundred contractual services plus two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-six cents with a new total. Um, help me out, um, with the new total. That's gonna be a little more than. And as we're calculating the new total, the line below it that had a smaller amount, that will just be, uh, deleted.
I guess while they're working on those numbers, Mr. President, we do apologize for it being so last minute. I know David and I were on the phone Friday into the evening as I was, uh, on my way to the game. We were talking today, trying to get all of these answers coupled, coupled together. But as I mentioned in committee of the whole, it's just one of those things when you're working with the city of Tiffin, Seneca County Commissioners, the townships, TSEP, uh, the, the state of Ohio, Office of Budget Management, the federal government, or the money coming from, and such a short time span to get this done, trying to get all the answers is just put us right up literally against the deadline right here where we are with you. But the good news is it sounds like we've got the answers, uh, in time. Um, I don't think there's any wrong way to go, uh, regardless of what direction we head with this. The money is going to be expended here to help Tiffin. Um, but I think, you know, the preference of a lot of us is that we help our businesses because we know by these grants, it's going to help them stay afloat and it's going to allow that money to hopefully be used to better their business, keep them in business, and thus generate far and away more tax revenue than the, the six to ten thousand dollars they received from the grant. So I hope maybe my filibuster gave Brent and Kathy enough time.
Yeah, I, I believe that the dollar amount, if I, Kathy, if you can confirm, but I think it should be, um, four hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. That would be the sum of the, the new total that we had, plus the, um, the twenty-nine, three oh nine sixty. If that sounds right, Kathy. And again, what we're doing, the purpose of this ordinance is to appropriate the money in the line item to allow for the money to be um, spent, sent to the county for the purposes that we've, we've heard this evening.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I am all for helping our local businesses, but I do think it warrants discussion. How are we in terms of what we have in the coronavirus, uh, recovery funds for our fire, police, and EMS? I just worry with this pandemic, you know, not particularly going away anytime soon. Uh, my brother-in-law is a police officer in Finley. They've just had an outbreak on the force. He's currently quarantined with COVID. And, you know, all it's gonna take is a, is a little bit and we could be racking up some pretty serious expenses. So I suppose I'd just like to know if we're in solid footing in that regard uh, before we fully commit to sending this back to the county for, uh, business aid.
Mayor, do you wanna respond to that?
Um, yeah, I can. I guess the best way to respond to it, Councilman Gillig, is with the information that we have. Um, where we are at currently, uh, we're okay and we will survive. Um, the question is if, if the governor shuts us down for a month or two, um, like some of the European countries have done, what impact does that have? Uh, then we're probably not okay. Um. It, it's such a difficult answer because we don't know what the future holds. Um, I guess the way I look at it, our original intent when we created this program, we, we assumed all this money was going to be used and we'd never even have a second chance at it. Uh, and here we are with that second opportunity. Um, so trying to predict, I guess, where things are going, um, it's impossible. If we are, if we are not shut down again and, and businesses are able to remain open, I'm confident we are in a position where we are not going to be laying off police officers, firefighters, et cetera. Uh, the question becomes is if we shut down again and how long that shutdown lasts, that is where we run the risk of, of what kind of financial hit we take. And I can't sit here and also tell you that guaranteed if we shut down for a month like we did earlier this year, that we're going to, uh, uh, not have to potentially lay anyone off. We're looking at making changes. Um. I just, I guess I wish I had a crystal ball to know where things were headed, but I don't.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that is a, a good caveat and perhaps I hadn't thought of it that way. You know, this was money that we had originally intended uh, to go to our local businesses. And as you mentioned, the hope was that we would expend all of the funds. Um, and that didn't happen, but now it appears with what Mr. Zach says, um, we have fifty-six for-profit businesses and five nonprofit businesses, um, that could be in line to receive uh, some of these funds. So I suppose, uh, for me, I guess that would make a lot of sense to, to stick with, um, what we had originally intended.
Anyone else?
You've got Steve Leopard who's, uh, wanting to speak. I don't know if you can.
What's that?
Steve Leopard wants to speak.
I'm sorry, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, let me throw another, another twist into this. Is it possible to divide that money between business and city?
I didn't hear you. What'd you say?
Is it possible to divide that money between business and city?
Oh. David?
So the mechanics of, you know, what does this? If I understand Councilman Leopard's question, it's, it's a question of whether or not the city, and so I'm repeating it back to you, Councilman Leopard, if I'm understanding you. Are you asking, does the city have the authority to allocate a portion of that two hundred and forty-one dollars and two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to the county and retain some of it for the purposes that Councilman Gillig is speaking of? Is that your question?
Correct.
So I would assume so, but I'm not the legal expert in the room. Uh, I mean, you can, you, you, you have discretion on how much you want to give back uh, or give to the county that would be funneled towards Tiffin businesses. Um, and that is a policy decision that council makes. Uh, my job is just to inform you that there is more demand in the event that you would choose, uh, and you have that choice to, to take all of that money and give it to the county to invest in the Seneca CARES program. There's more than enough demand to account for all that. But to your point, you do not have to. That's my understanding, but I'll defer to Brent and/or Kathy if they have a different understanding.
Uh, law director.
Yeah, I, I think the answer, Steve, is yes, you could do that. The, the issue then is, um, um, what amounts do you um, retain with the city and what amount do you, um, send to the county? And, um, you'd have to determine that tonight and, um, we would make further amendments to the, um, or an amendment to reflect that allocation between the city and the county in the ordinance. So I, I don't know if, if anyone else can help, um, just make that decision, help you make that decision as to what you retain. Um, you know, as mayor has indicated, you know, it's, it's a judgment call. We, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen in the future here, um, in terms of, um, the city funds that's necessary for safety service. Um, or, um, we don't know, you know, what our businesses will need. So, um, we were looking at put it into one or the other. Um, but I suppose you legally can. The answer is, I believe, yes, you could allocate it in some percentage to each.
Councilman Perry.
All right, this might be a dumb question, but say we put the money into our general fund, would we be allowed to, I, I guess, just to make sure that we avoid another lockdown, I guess it'd be, it'd be, uh, hard to swallow putting this money into the county and then taking the lockdown and knowing that we could have had that money for the city. Um, I'm wondering if we could put it into the general fund. And then if we avoid a lockdown, if we could create another, uh, program for the city out of the general fund, uh, later to do another round of, for the businesses if they're hurting.
Law director.
Well, first and, and help me Kathy or David, but this, this money is not in the general fund. Um, first, let's, it's, it's restricted to the particular fund. Uh, it needs to be spent from the Two-Ninety-Six CARES Act fund. Isn't that correct? Um, Kathy?
Yes, that is correct. It's on Two-Ninety-Six.
And there are time periods too, so for it just to sit there, um, I, I don't think that we could just allow that to happen either. Um, it's gotta be spent, so, um, um, we can't do a wait and see.
Yeah, my understanding is we have to have this spent by the twentieth, which is Friday, where it has to, at that point, has to go back to the county. Um, at that point, and then they have to then turn around and soon after that, give it back to the state if it's not used. So that's why we're under this pretty extreme time crunch to try to, uh, use the funds. So your only other option other than making a decision tonight would be to hold a special meeting later this week and make a decision, which I don't think any of us really want to.
Uh, Councilman Leopard.
I would suggest, uh, two-thirds business, one-third city. Since, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, we don't know what's gonna happen with our. Since, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, we don't know what's going to happen with our safety service departments. And I would, I don't know, I think that would be a good distribution.
Councilwoman Yonatuno.
Well, as I keep listening to the conversations back and forth, I, I think a valid point is made. We had discussed early on giving it to city services. But this money then was allocated to the businesses. And just because we didn't spend that whole amount doesn't mean it shouldn't still go to the businesses. That was the original intent that we decided on, um, just a few months ago. So even though I'm kind of worried about the city services, uh, I think I would probably stick with getting it to the businesses like we originally decided.
Councilman Shaw.
I had a grip on, on that.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, thanks. Ju- just quickly, the, the only thing I, I want to add to that is, um, you know, as, as we keep saying, we don't know what the future holds for, for any of us, for the city or for the businesses. But what we do know are the facts that David has shared is that there is, I believe, 56 employers, or I'm sorry, businesses that have applied for, for these funds and are waiting for these funds and are in need of it. Um, we, we don't know if the city is going to need the funds and not discrediting everything that the, that the police and fire do for us. I, um, but at the same time, I just want to look at the facts here because there's so much unknown going on right now. So, uh, that would be my, my, uh, vote of in favor of, of putting it back to the county for the.
Mayor.
Yeah, I guess the way I look at it, I don't think there's a wrong answer. Because we know that regardless of where these funds are put, we're going to, they're going to be put to good use and it's going to go to helping stave off trouble for either the city or for businesses or some of both when it comes to the pandemic. Um, I'm okay with whatever council decides. We're going to use those funds. You better believe it. Um, it's just a matter of what council prefers to happen with this. The other way to look at it is putting this into the, the businesses helps them stay open and generate additional tax revenue for us the rest of this year, next year, et cetera. And essentially is paying that grant back through their income taxes. Um, Mr. President, I know you don't want to drag this out. Uh, the county administrator is, uh, in our Zoom room and she does have her hand up. I'm not sure if you would like me to allow her in or not.
Definitely, go ahead.
Uh, show me joining then, uh, Stacy Wilson, but, uh, I apologize for dragging this out. Uh, I guess.
We want to get it right.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I love the feedback we've heard. Uh, Stacy Wilson, I think you're in the room now. So, uh, I think you might have wanted to say something.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so I was trying to talk to David about this and, um, uh, Law Director Howard, and you may be able to help me on this. You've already expended the funds to TSEP according to your contract. And as long as you do not have the funds back prior to the 20th deadline, then that deadline is non-existent. Unless they return the money to you, then you have to have it appropriated and spent by the 20th. But in essence, you already have that spent. It's already sent to TSEP. So it would probably be best to wait till after the 20th. And then you could decide to do this. Does that make sense? Director Howard, is that?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Um, I guess my concern would be, um, if we then, the city receives the money back from, uh, TSEP after the 20th, um, what kind of questions or concerns are we going to raise now that we have money that we then are going to take, I guess, further action in the future to, to send to the county? We'll still need to come back and take, ha- have council take action by ordinance. Um, and will the state have any problem with us sending it back to you after that date? Even though we didn't have it, you know, prior to the date, but we, we have it afterwards.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I, I think that it would be better if we could make a decision this evening. You know, we've had some great discussion here and, um, council can decide what they need to do. And I can help along with Kathy to make sure that we have the, the, the language of the ordinance as you, as you see fit. Um, I, I think we'd be better to get this decision made, um, now so that we can comply with this, uh, 20th de- uh, deadline. I, I don't want the auditors looking at this and raising any concerns and questions in the future.
Sure, I was just trying to think of an option since it seemed to be, um, maybe not a comfortable decision to make it in such a hurry.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you, counsel.
Um, we could, um, we could have a, we could have another meeting like on Wednesday. If we need time to think about this, couldn't we?
Yes.
If we're not prepared, it, I mean, it seems to me there's a lot of confusion here. I'm confused, so, um, do we need more time to think about this? That's a question. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think we need to take any more time because with the deadline of Friday, and I just hate to see any of this, even a penny of this going back to the state. But in summary, the way I'm hearing this, if TSEP cuts a check to the county for the county would disperse it among the townships in the Tiffin small businesses. I think that sounds logical to me.
Okay. Anyone else? Ma- uh, Law Director.
It just to confirm, we had a, um, I think TSEP has to give the money back to the city. Because we have a contract with them to perform certain services and expend the money in a particular way. And, um, and, and since there was money left unspent, I think it has to come back to the city. And you, as council, can then pass this ordinance tonight or on Wednesday that appropriates it for further expenditure that you decide.
Okay, we need to move this ahead. What's, what's the, um, Councilman Gillig?
May I just ask, uh, with the vote, um, what will the yes and no vote entail? Because we've done some amending and had some discussion and I've suffered a number of concussions in my day.
Well, we haven't, we haven't decided yet on, on the, uh, we can, uh, Law Director.
Yeah, I, I guess what I would say that it's been read for the first time. And, um, even though there may have been a motion to pass, um, maybe under the, the circumstances, the president could consider that, uh, motion, you know, not recognized. And so now we have a clean slate, which means that you could either do two things. You may, um, pass the ordinance as presented, which would allow for that money to stay with the city, to be used for, uh, safety service, uh, expenses, wages. Or the alternative would be to move to amend Ordinance 20-121 by changing, amending the line item to read, as I stated before, which allows for it to be placed in the line item of contractual services under the CARES Act Fund of the city in the full amount of $241,650.86. And then that will allow again to be spent to the, the city. After that amendment, then you can then vote on passage. Um, so that, those are your two choices then, if that makes sense.
Councilwoman Yonatuno.
Um, Mr. President, I'd be willing to amend, uh, Ordinance 20-121 as stated by Law Director Howard.
Okay. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to amend Ordinance 20-121, um, per the law director's, uh, uh, language, which I, we got a lot of numbers and stuff here. Do you have it written down, Brent?
I do.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Now, just for, uh, okay, uh, is there any discussion? For clarification, just, uh,
Well, that's what I was going to do is clarify.
Right, for clarification, Brent, would you explain precisely what the amendment is again?
Okay, the amendment changes the ordinance to, um, appropriate the funds to be spent to Seneca County for the purposes of, uh, the grants for Tiffin businesses.
Okay. Everybody, everybody clear? Councilman Leopard?
That is a yes vote then for businesses.
Yes.
Now, yes.
Now it is, yeah. Okay, is everybody clear?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
No, first, vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the amendment. Yeah. We'll call the vote on the, uh, on the amendment, please.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yonatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
And Shaw?
Yes.
The motion to amend Ordinance 20-2121 is, uh, passed with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the suspension.
One second. I'm getting there, one second. Okay, there we are. Uh, on the suspension, Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yonatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yonatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
And Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance one, uh, Ordinance 20-121 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Good, the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. And now you know how to make sausage. All right, that's the, uh, that's the end of the agenda. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend city council, city administration, and TSEP. It's been going on almost two years now and the best explanation was tonight of Ordinance 20-118 through 20-121. With the discussion and the clarification, I think myself and the community fully understands why we suspended the three reading rule on those four items. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Okay. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I was thinking earlier when the mayor, uh, honored, uh, Joe Granata and Dave Martin, uh, for their service on the planning commission. Uh, put my memory back in the jog mood and, uh, I think each one of those have probably served the city for 45 years or more. Each one of those individuals. And, uh, when I was appointed to city council nearly 20 years ago, my first phone call congratulating me came from Florida. And that was Joe Granata. Thank you for your service, Joe and Dave.
Yeah. Law Director.
Yeah, and if I can add something specific to what they did, uh, it was with their leadership and others in the late eighties and early nineties to work together to create North Star Industrial Park, which was a huge step in helping to create jobs that many people now are, you know, taking home pay to provide for their families. And it helped to diversify our local economy because we were heavily reliant on large manufacturing facilities. So that when any of those would close, we were, the local economy was devastated. And through their foresight to establish an industrial park, and then that concept was duplicated with Eagle Rock Business Park. We've diversified our economy with many smaller employers, which helps, um, the, the local economy when there is, like there naturally will be when businesses close or they're, they downsize. So, um, w- we are still, right now, we are benefiting from their leadership almost 30 years ago.
And one was a Democrat and one was a Republican. And I'll tell you what, people on a national level can learn a lesson from how they get politics done in Tiffin, Ohio. Anyone else? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, um, can I schedule a long community planning committee meeting?
Why certainly, yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, but in looking at the request for legislation, I, um, Mayor, I imagine you as well as, uh, City Engineer Matt Watson would, um, be attending this meeting, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that would, uh, probably be pretty accurate based off of, uh, what we've said to your committee, myself, Matt Watson, uh, potentially a couple of Matt's staff as well, but, uh, as long as you get Matt and I there, uh, it should be good.
Okay. Okay, um, I was looking at, I was looking at my calendar and Danny also trying to accommodate your lovely work schedule. Um, can you, uh, are you available Wednesday, uh, this Wednesday, 11:18 at 5:00 PM?
Um, that should work. Um, I was, I have to see if Katie's working or not. I know I'm off work, so I might have some kids here, but I can definitely make it.
Okay, um, Steve, does that work for you?
Yeah, I'm good on the 18th at 5:00, if you say.
Yep. Um, Mayor, i- does that accommodate your schedule?
Uh, yes, it does. Um, I don't have access to Matt's, but it should be fine. Matt, uh, Matt goes on vacation. He actually leaves, uh, this coming Friday. So that's great that we get it taken care of before he takes a week off, so, well deserved.
Great. Um, okay, well, with that, then I would like to announce a long community planning committee meeting this Wednesday, November 18th at 5:00 PM via Zoom to discuss the mayor's request for legislation, um, number 20-46 revisions to zoning code and as well as 20-47 Tiffin zoning code change, as well as any other business to come before the committee.
I will send the link to that out, Bridget, to all of the council members instead of just committee. So council can decide if anyone else is interested in watching. Uh, Matt also texted me already and said it's good, so he must be out there watching, so Watson will be there.
And he's still awake. That's a good sign. Anyone else? Uh, Law Director.
Yeah, just want to remind, uh, council and the public that there is a special council meeting next, um, Monday. I don't know if, um, uh, President, you were going to, um, announce that again.
Yes, I was.
Okay, go right ahead.
I was just getting ready to do it.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure it got done. Go right ahead.
Yeah, uh, just to remind everybody, there'll be a special council meeting to, uh, discuss the, uh, uh, the DORA. And, uh, that will be Monday, November 23rd at 6:15. Anything else? Another successful night. Um, thanks to everybody's, uh, hard work and attention. Uh, God bless you all and have a good night and a good week.
Yeah.